Okay, good evening. I'm Pat Gales and this is the Dyton Historical Commission, February 14th meeting. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:04 or 6:05, Rafa?
6:05.
Okay. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded. It is a hybrid meeting tonight, so all votes will be done by roll call. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Alright, so the first thing is, we have the minutes from December 13th, 2022. We didn't look at them last time because there was a problem with using Google Drive. Are there any corrections, amendments, any changes?
Is this December 13th?
It's the December 13th, yeah, or December 13th.
Because he's got 12 on.
So we'll change that. Other than that, was there anything else? Nope. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Second.
No. Yeah, to make the motion.
I'm sorry, who moved it first?
Nobody yet. Irene, Irene, are you making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Is Ron? Alright, and we will vote. Pat? On the favor of the minutes, accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rafa's aye.
Yep.
Ron's aye, Irene aye, and I'm also an aye, okay. Unfortunately, Rafa didn't have a chance to get to the minutes of January, so he'll have them ready for the March meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Budget. Our budget balance for FY23 is $1,561.90 with an invoice for $1,899 for the thumb drives still pending. It's being processed over at Town Hall. And our Segregated Gift Account is the same as before, $5,683.34. Okay, that's our budget. The FY24 budget, I met with Mike Mullen today regarding our proposed budget of $1,400. We talked about it and there are really no issues with it. He thought that was a pretty fair budget that we put in. So next steps would be to go to the Finance Committee. Exactly. So that's ongoing. The next item I have is discuss, review, and act on the payment designation form. Right now, we have Pat and Rafa on it. I'd like to keep them on it. But I would like to add my name. There's been two instances where I've had to sign something because it had to be done immediately and it's been passed and all that, but just make it clear. I think that would be helpful to have me as the third person being in the chair.
True.
I just wondered, only one person has to really sign the invoice and the paperwork for the submittal. And remember that no invoice is ever, you know, submitted without the approval of the commission. You know, so we always vote on it. Does anyone have an issue with that? Alright, then I would entertain a motion to add Pat Gales as a payment designee for the invoice signing.
No.
Side of the table looks now quiet.
Oh, Irene. Okay.
Two words.
Pat, are you, are you?
No, Irene is.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Come on.
Second.
Okay, so it'll be Pat Olson, Rafa, and...
No.
No, not yet.
Oh.
I couldn't.
Then let's not just write stuff down there.
Whoa, start again. Why not? Want to make sure we knew what we were voting for?
That's not fair.
Okay, let's vote. In favor, Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Irene? Rafa?
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes. Thank you. Now, the members that are sitting here, we just need to sign. Alright.
What's the difference designated persons and who is a designated person?
I can sign invoices, Rafa can sign, and what we just voted on is Pat's adding her name, so she can sign.
In the event they can't.
Somebody submitted an invoice and we are the three people, you couldn't sign, you're not a designated signer.
So, so this was already determined before this names, before this got filled in, were these already determined?
It was only. My discussion was Pat and Rafa are already doing it, are already doing it. I just asked to add my name.
Okay, yeah, it's like adding another.
Agree, then you just.
Yeah, it's like adding another name to the checkbook.
There you go, exactly.
Because we're hard to find as part timers.
Okay. Moving right along. Unfinished business, the James Briggs Garden sign. Peach Sign is not able to give us a quote for this project at this time. I had no response from the other vendors today. The town administrator reached out to Ed Dutra, who's our Frisco Plymouth representative, and Ed's going to follow up on the request for us. So we'll see what happens with that. I think if need be, we'll have to maybe rethink this project because it doesn't seem to be going.
Yeah, we better join up, extend with it, yeah.
So anyway, that's where it stands right now.
Did I send you a like a comparison quote from outfit in Pennsylvania? Just to get an idea, try to get an idea.
I had one from this Panier Group. Oh, I think they were from Pennsylvania, yeah.
Because they look like they did it for a living and, you know.
Yeah, they were like about $1,600.
$1,600?
Yeah, if it's the same group. So, Ron, you wanted to talk about the Boston Post cane website?
Well, not really, but I will. I sent you a little follow up on picking the dead horse. It seems like the website, which would, to me, a very valuable website. What is the...
Can you give everyone a little bit of background for it?
That's the.
Okay.
The, someone and seemed to be one gentleman created this website where everybody that had a Boston Post cane, and there are a lot of towns that have them, had a central clearinghouse for who has it in town. It was like a big database of where these canes are, what condition they're in. If somebody needed help, my cane, the head fell off. You could go through their website and find one of the other towns would tell you where to go to get fixed or get a duplicate, you know, the replica ones that they've started giving out because the other ones are... So it was a very active database and it has died. And I'm afraid that's all going to get lost because it's just in Google land right now.
What, the website?
Yeah, it doesn't have an administrator and it's just been sitting there.
Does it say any place with last time, last, the date of last been updated?
Yeah, well, I looked at the last update and it was like three years ago.
Maybe the man passed?
Could be. Because it was like, a lot of these is really one engine that's driving the whole thing. And he had taken a leave of absence and he came back all gung ho, had two or three posts, and then he's gone again. And we actually participated in that website previous to that when he was very active. So I, and boy, what a goldmine to see just go away. Because there's no other central clearinghouse that I'm aware of for that information. There was a fixed number that were given out and he was able to corral like three quarters of them. It's like over 1,000. He was able to keep tabs on.
Was there a reference to Dyton?
In there, yes.
Oh, yeah, well.
I mean, on the website, I mean, some of the click or whatever.
It was just in the, you can go to each town on that website and see what the latest update was, who's got it.
So what about Dyton?
Yeah. But it died.
I would do better that way.
But it died, you know, it stopped.
Was he affiliated with the Historical Society? Is this?
Not that I can find.
To find out what happened to this.
Well, you anticipated what I did do because I did reach out to.
Why is that? Great Mind State Collective? Is that why I anticipated what you did?
Myrna's posts a lot of times use a website for pictures of things. It is the New England Historical Society. And I said, that's a perfect fit.
Okay.
Because the Boston Post canes are in all five states of New England, and that's it. The original point of it, it was a marketing tool that
Right.
the Boston Post used to gain interest in their banner headline. But it's turned into a self motivating, and people are very proud. I'm sure that they've had fistfights over this thing over the years, and it's like over 100 years old, literally. Yeah, actually, if you look at our cane, it's got a couple of dents.
Yeah.
I'd like to know what the story was behind it. So I reached out to them about a month ago saying, you know, it's really a shame that this is going to go away. Are you aware of that?
Well, what makes you think, I must have missed something, what makes you think the website's going away? A lot of websites don't get updated for a long time, but they don't go away necessarily.
Well, I don't think they ever go away, but they go, go away if there's no activity in them.
Was there a way to try to upload any of our information?
I did.
And what, did it take it?
No, I get a computer response saying, we have received your blah, 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 and you will hear from us shortly or you will see it posted. And that was back when we were talking about the Boston Post cane, you know, where is it now today? In Dyton, we should be able to go to that website and it will tell you.
Yeah, right.
When it was given, who got it, who had it before, it was really a...
Yeah, but how would they know that unless somebody posted?
Yeah.
You'd have to update it or somebody.
Somebody did.
Exactly.
Updated.
And now that's not working anymore.
Why don't you take it over?
I'd rather a legitimate historical group that, besides me, that...
Well, this is a legitimate.
Okay, do you want to go, want me to have it transferred over to us?
No.
No, okay.
But you know what I'm saying? Oh, okay.
I've been known to create.
Alright, so.
So anyway, I sent a test to see if hello, is anybody there type
Yeah.
response to the New England group.
Then we went.
And they came back, so what are you talking about? So I went back to yesterday or today and explained the whole thing again, trying to get some interest before it goes away. It might still be there, but no one will know it. And it basically is getting, you know, more and more outdated as time goes by. And I don't know that the story behind it, but really they seem to be the logical one to pick it up if they were so.
So you sent an email twice, okay.
Well, I think you've done the due diligence on it.
I can too.
Yeah, yeah.
There was no address.
Yeah.
And put some other things on there. If you needed a replica, there's certain towns that know, because, oh yeah, we just did that and we went to this, this guy.
Which website, what's the address?
I don't know. If you Google Boston Post cane, it'll pop up.
Ron, can you just send it to Bill or just send it to everyone? Just send the link.
Oh, okay. You mean, that's our regular distribution?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. No, that's even better.
Alright.
I will do that if I can remember.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for doing that, for trying to update, you know, putting our.
Well, I just hope it doesn't go away because we spent a lot of time up in Maine, and Maine is very, very adamant about their Boston Post canes. You do not mess with those little, it's all little towns. It isn't the Portlands and the Quincy's and all that stuff. It's little towns like ours that are very proud of those.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that. Moving on, preservation planning. Our update for Phase 2, Stacy was in town in February, starting to take pictures and doing her research work. So she started that.
And that is for which section?
Mount Hope and North Dyton.
Okay, that's the.
Yep.
If you see a lady walking around with a camera, don't call the cops.
The police know, the police have been notified. They have her information and stuff, so, yeah. The final on Phase 1, Ron put three notebooks together with all the survey forms. They're in my car. I have some pictures to add to the archival copy and some copies of the final report, and thanks, Ron, for doing that. That was a big job. I have the thumb drives and I'll download them and I'll give those and the final reports to the town departments that we talked about. And I gave Myrna, the town historian, her thumb drive, so she has the information, the survey forms. Our Historic Buildings of Dyton Library with a program with the library is rescheduled to March 23rd at 6:30 here at Old Town Hall. So that should be fun. The Historical Marker Program, we've received two more applications for markers for 150 Chase Street and 158 Chase Street, and Rafa is in the process of reviewing those. Correct, Rafa?
Yes.
Okay, he's on it.
I don't know if you want me to say anything or not, so I'll.
Well, do you have something?
Well, I'd like to at least have thoughts about what I had mentioned earlier was having historical markers placed on some of the town and church buildings that.
Okay, the church buildings, the town doesn't own, so each church would have to be in charge of their own. As far as the town buildings go, I have mentioned it both to Jim Aggar and to Mike. They didn't really answer, but it doesn't seem to be an issue. They're going to chat and get back to us, so.
And as far as the cost goes, I have an anonymous donor who will pay for at least six of those.
Oh, okay.
Just let me know when I will get the cash.
Oh, oh, that's good. Okay, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we can work on that. Um. Anybody have anything else on historical markers or the program? Alright. The next one is the recommendations of the final survey report. So in part of the survey report, I hope you guys have your, your copies from your email because I made paper copies here for everyone.
You can save one if I got, I did manage to crack the code.
Okay.
Was able to.
Alright, there's one. Who else needs one of these? Irene, if I need that. Okay, do you need that one?
No.
So I figured this would be a good place to start, I guess, especially to prioritize what we need to do, which way are we going? Look at the eligibility recommendations of the individual properties and
It's the same.
There's two.
No.
No. Mention different formats, because one includes the context description and one is just an Excel listing. So I'm thinking about, you know, like, which way do we want to go? What are our priorities on these properties? Which ones should we look at and study a little bit more and consider them for consideration for the National Register?
I became quite an expert on making the books up. She did one hell of a job.
Oh, when you were looking at the forms?
On updating all of that stuff.
Yeah.
It's really a treasure trove of information.
Yeah.
But you're right, what do we do now, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's the question.
What this is, right?
So, you know, like, what are our priorities? What do we want to do, which? So what we have to do, this might help somewhat, the National Register process starts with the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So you send them a recent or a new inventory form or an updated form, which we have, and they review it, and we send it to their National Register Director, who is Ben Healy, I think this is his last name. Look at the criteria, they compare it to the criteria that is set up through the National Register Historic District Program, and they say yes or no, whether they consider it to be eligible or not. Now, once the Mass Historic Commission considers it to be eligible, it is noted on the MACRIS database and it is also included in on the State Register of Historic Places that we get every year. Because when you look at that, it has, for Dyton, it has our two National Historic Districts, and it has the Bridge District down here for when the Berkeley Bridge was the old bridge and the surrounding properties. They never take that eligibility piece away, but that never, now they're qualified.
Approved, right?
Right, yeah. So it, that's as far as that got. So you do get that determination as being eligible. That's one level, but then once it's determined eligible, then that's when the whole process of the application to the national, through the National Park Service.
And they all have to be done, you smell.
You can do areas
Really?
or you can do you can do individual ones or areas. If you're doing an individual property, it has to include pictures of the exterior and the interior with the permission of the owner. When you're doing a district, say that we say, for example, we looked at the Brick Historic District. When you look at that, it helps to have the support of the owners in the district, you know, for the application. And you do not need the individual, the interior photos. So so that's how, and then, you know, the National Park Service takes a look at it, their National Register District takes a look at it, and then they make their determination. Either you're on the, you know, the National Register or you're not. So.
And the thing that makes that important is that register is the baseline for getting grants.
Correct.
Et cetera, from just about everybody. It's the first question out of their mouths is, is it
Correct.
on that register. That's what makes it important.
Right. And there are some grants where if it's a municipal owned building, it opens up more grants. You know, so it does, it does have some benefits to it. Now, the cost piece of it can ranges from like $5,000 for one building for an individual building to $15,000 and above, depending on the number of buildings.
What is that cost again?
$5,000 to do the National Register nomination, and what you're paying for, because again, they ask for a professional preservation consultant to complete the application process. I wouldn't want to do it, but.
I can't imagine, you're saying that the filing or the application fee is as much as $5,000?
It's going to cost you to pay for the preservation consultant to put that application together, yes.
And I guess.
Because it's the number, because it's the number of properties that it backs for a district. So it would be the number of properties in the district. The examples that they give are a large cemetery, the turn of the 19th century, $10,000. Two small cemeteries together, $8,000. A one acre town park that includes historic period archaeological site of national significance costs $8,000. A 15 acre municipal park with significant buildings and structures costs $15,000. So they said, one can expect to spend in excess of $15,000 on the nomination of a historic district for a town or a village center.
Who, who get, when you write the checkout, who gets the check? It's written about to.
I don't know that part of the process yet.
I'm sure it's, there's a lot of hints that come out.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
So, well, you're paying for the preservation consultant again to do the in-depth study. And if you want to see the National Register applications, I can send the ones for the Quorum Shipyard and the Wharf District.
And so those are the districts, right?
They're both districts.
Do you know when the last, well, how many, you know roughly besides, well, individual homes, do you know of any in Dyton that are on the register?
There are none.
There are none.
An individual home, it would be the homeowner that would do that.
Not if we do the application, if we say we want to do it. The homeowner could, anyone can start the process, you know, a homeowner could do the whole National Register process without us if they so choose.
Is that what happened with the Shipyard District and all that?
No, those were, no, those were done, I think, through the the Heritage something Heritage Foundation.
So you mean Historical Commission before it was called Historical Commission?
No, this was a different group of people.
That was Heritage something?
Yeah, it was Heritage something, because this was originally a Heritage Committee. But I, that would be on the application.
Something, yeah.
I, I don't know, because that was way before my time.
Yeah, me too.
So I can send you those forms so you can see what they look like. They're from.
This sounds cost prohibitive to me for most people. You'd have, why would $5,000 is?
Well, yeah, you take a look at what we spent to do the 90 homes. You know, we spent, you know, by the time we're done with the two, you know, the two projects, it's $50,000 total, even though we got the $12,500 for the grant.
And even if you did all these.
Yeah, that's why we got to, you know, pick priorities.
Probably a million dollars.
So you got to pick priorities, what's the importance, what, you know.
What she did for us was tell us the ones, in her opinion, that we could do it.
I know that if you, if you, if I do some research on buildings, especially if I hear, if I read in the Globe, there's something that there's an endangered building, and I think, I forget the name, there's a group, they have a website in Boston, it's something Boston. And, and that's their thing is to try to save buildings that are on, on the list to be demolished or, or whatever. And, so I'll go and look up. On that town website. And I'll see, it, it seems to me that probably the most. The most number of these. That are granted by towns who have. They, they just. Funded, you know, maybe they go before the town meeting or whatever, but they, they have a deeper pockets than say.
I don't know, doesn't Berkeley have a Historic District?
They have a Historic District.
Is that, is that a national one?
I don't think so.
Is it a local one?
I think it's local, I don't quote me. But the area of the common, as you start coming.
Yeah.
South Main Street. It encompasses the common, and there is a sign near Fornia's Farm.
Right, right.
And I think it's just that common area. They have signs up on South Main Street, Porter Street. Only seen two.
What about the districts that are here? Two national districts, Historic District. How did they come about? Do you remember, we, do you remember? I don't remember, I saw like.
I remember my mom, because she was on Pleasant Street. Talk, she talked about them making that whole area. A, a district. And I found a letter in her, all the things that she left, that. The Historical Commission had sent, saying that they were making efforts, and that was for the Lower Taunton River area. Which is one of the areas that's on the MACRIS. But it's a huge area, it's something, it was the letter, oh, eighty-one, eighty.
Oh, that recent.
Yeah, yeah. So. And I remember her talking about that, because she was very excited, because the house was old, and it would be in a district, you know? Then it never, it didn't seem to go anywhere, and I don't know what happened, if it didn't. Go to town meeting, or it got voted down at town meeting, it just disappeared. So around this, I think, just prior to that, is when they did. The Wharf District and the Water Street District.
All right, but we don't know.
I don't know that. If we look at the forms, I don't think the forms that I have, that I found. Have costs on them.
What about? Maybe you mentioned it already, but. What are the costs of, say, a district? That has. X number of houses.
I'm, from what I, you know. Because I went to that workshop where I got that pricing information, the Zoom workshop, you know, I would say it started fifteen thousand.
Well, they may give you a break.
You know, and we also can apply to the survey and planning grant for. Help with, for the, this work too. Because that comes under, you know, we've used it to update our forms, but we can also use it to. Help with the, the funding for the district.
That would be CPC money.
No, it would be state money. Oh, this would be, we go to CPC too, yeah.
But the same logic would apply.
Right.
Went the next step is. Really competent. So you could pick, like. Say, three of the most.
Or prioritize, what you, what you think, you know, what's the number one we should do, what's the number two? You know, because we're also going to be getting, what's going to change the next two is when we start getting information in, on North Dayton. Hope area.
Right.
But I think if we start figuring out at least what we think about these.
Yeah, maybe try one. Well, how does that impact on, of having a North Dayton district?
I don't think it'll change it.
Well, I mean, in terms of cost.
Yeah, I.
Now, what, how about the difference between the cost for a local Historic District versus a?
A local Historic District. Is done by town bylaw. Because that has. Very specific, you know, the, the specific conditions that you want, there are things that you want in the house, you know? In the, in the district.
And there's, so there's no cost, really, for that.
Probably you'd have to do some research as far as why it's going to be a local Historic District. I wouldn't know, that'd be another thing to research.
Does, that's the one that has the fee, is the local Historic District, is the concerns that people have. This national stuff is. Really flexible. But.
Well, they don't, yeah, they don't.
The local one is where you.
It depends on how the bylaw was written.
Exactly.
Right.
You know.
Right, you can make your local Historic District bylaw as strong or as weak as you want.
Yep, like all houses have to be white, you know, some towns have a.
Really.
That's coming in and saying, well. You know, you gotta do this, this, no, it isn't, it's. Really local.
Colette might have been involved in the eighties.
She might have.
On whichever, I'm just thinking, who's still around, but you could ask, maybe, why did they do this and not West Street, or? Who else, Mrs. Valley's gone. Who else would have been active on that committee at the time, and all I think of is Colette. If you, McKeon.
Funny, I was, I was just gonna say that. No, I, I, as a matter of fact.
The lawyer's wife, there you go, yeah, that's nice.
She put the post in. The last post for Dayton, I think, was Colette.
She's been very involved for a very long time in the history.
They're still here.
I just wanted to ask her, maybe she has nothing to do with it, maybe she joined in eighty-five or something.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
They were.
Are you friendly with her?
On Facebook.
On Facebook?
Oh, cool.
I can reach out.
Have gotten something like your mom did? No, I think she's spearheading it, I think she's part of the group that went and did all this.
Oh. I had that impression from some other committee I was on, that that was true, that. Keon had a lot to do with. The creation of those.
All right, so I can. I can reach out to Colette to figure out, you know, ask her those questions.
Give us some idea.
All right.
Really, we, we should try a trial balloon, I think, if, if we want, are interested in doing.
Right. Now, either Irene or Bill, could you reach out to Berkeley, one of you? Irene to Berkeley to figure out their Historic District.
Okay. Can I make one comment?
Yep.
On these contexts, I believe they're all individual, right? So, like. Control the context of residential development, okay, my only comment is on, the one that says context, architectural expression. Of the craftsman arts and craft style in Dayton. Of all the, and I know, I read it, I mean, I know what it says, of all the beautiful examples in North Dayton. Three are listed here. And we do the thing on North Dayton, that sort of erases. I wouldn't focus on those three, I would focus on the streets and streets of North Dayton with craftsmen type. We're not gonna do them all, I, I know that, because it's not, there's no sense in that, but I mean, I would. Tie that into the North Dayton section of it, and not even bother with these three houses on Center Street.
So that, that's part, that's step one of a plan.
That's, that's my comment, I didn't have a, a change comment, any of the other contexts. But when I saw this, it's like, yeah, they're three beautiful homes. But. It's a bazillion beautiful homes in North Dayton, why don't we look at, when we talk about the architectural expression of craftsmen arts and crafts. It's part of the North Dayton deal, not part of three homes on Center Street.
Okay. I understand that part, yeah, yeah. I can, I thought of this, this afternoon, that for the two, all the districts, the area forms, I can send you all the area forms. You know, the one, I don't know if you have them, you know? The forms that were completed for the brick. The lower four corners, and.
How did I get the name? When I was filing them, I'm saying.
There is a story behind that.
Because the brick church is there?
Or is the brick church there because the area is called the brick? Okay, but the brick's not on here.
Should be.
Where is it? I'm reading this.
Okay, the, okay, the Village Grove in Dayton, yeah.
Gotcha.
So. That's an area form. Lower Four Corners is an area form. The intersection of. The Residential Development in Dayton. That's Pleasant Street and Somerset Avenue and Main Street, that's an area form.
There were seven of them, if I remember.
Yeah, so we could, you know, look at those. Rafa, do you have any input on this?
No, not really.
Not really, okay.
So if you sent us these forms, say, for the Brick Historic District.
Yep.
Do what with them? You're gonna send us these forms?
And then you kind of like review and see what you think about significance, and so that we can. At least say. This would be one. This could be two.
Oh.
You know, priori, prioritize.
And it doesn't have to be every building in a district. It's.
No, but these here are listed, so.
Yeah.
Right. This first go around, she actually identified the ones that she thought would qualify.
Right.
Right, out of the area that she looked at, which, and she included the forms. I mean, she did a super job.
Right, so.
If you look at page one on, on this form, you see what she did on. The survey she, which she just finished, which is basically what she's doing in. Update, also same idea, but she listed out individual. Buildings, I'm not sure, would we ask her to do the hundred most. Oldest homes or something?
We started with the oldest homes, and then.
Yeah.
We added.
But you look at him as, wow, what it, that.
Yeah.
Like, I'll, I'll give you, the perfect example is. Smith Hall is on here.
Yep, yep.
And that, if that was on the National Register of Historic District, of places.
Yep.
That would open up federal grants.
Exactly.
For that project.
It's also, Smith Memorial Hall is also listed under. The Residential Development in Dayton. As part of the district of.
Right.
Pleasant Street and Main Street.
Fear what that was called, that district, or that.
Yeah, I think it was South Dayton Village, they call.
Yes, you're right. So anyway, what I'm saying is, we have enough. Information right here, you won't have to wait for the.
I, I have a thing.
Be the same thing as you.
I think we should take a look at. The area forms that we have.
Yes.
The other thing that she also included on the Excel sheet. But not on this Historic Property Survey Update, was the Elm Street, the Dayton Rock Farm. Which is.
Relax that, wait a while.
Only because they had to file all that stuff. What is that area?
That is.
One house, I think?
No, well, no. Dayton Rock Farm, and up in that area is called. That's an area form too.
Yeah. It's where the dye works was. So I did dig it, finally dig it out, to what area they were talking about.
Where the.
You're saying where ICI was? You said the dye.
No, 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 it's up on Elm Street, it's.
Near the rocks. There was a dairy there. Kings, Kingsley.
But that must border on the dye.
No.
It's that part of town.
I don't bother.
Further down.
The dye works on Elm Street.
No. This, this farm is. Past Hart Street, when you cross Hart Street.
Yeah, keep going.
Yeah.
I'll have to look at what the address was on that, that one.
Because that, that's also included there, and that's another area, you know, God forbid, they're all like. Disappearing and changing. So anyway, why don't we start, I think that's a good, good place to start, is, we'll review those area forms that are here. At least prioritize them, I mean, even if we pick one and say, let's just send it up to MHC and see what they say. You know, what are they gonna say, oh, you need this and this, or it's eligible.
Right, right, a good way, a good learning experience. But I would suggest we pick something that would be of value, we got it.
Right, right, so.
As an example. Well, the, the library, Carnegie Building, or, you know, whatever.
We'll look at it and see what people think, and, and pool it all together at that point, so we'll have that. To do for next meeting.
Oh, no.
Yes, have homework.
What are you calling about? I gotta go over to Berkeley.
For a week. It leaves us with a box.
You gotta go to Florida and talk to Colette.
I know, let me, I'm gonna figure that one out.
I'm an expense account.
Yeah.
Anyway, is there anything else that anyone wants to add on? This discussion? Ken, Rafa? Nope, okay. We have Plan A. Next, the Library Building Committee, met on January seventeenth, we reviewed the progress of the exterior work. And we also reviewed the budget for the project. The Library Building Committee has submitted their application for funding to the CPC. And it is on the agenda for this Thursday, February sixteenth, for the CPC.
Now, there was a question of when the time of the actual meeting was.
Their, their agenda says five thirty, is that what time you're meeting?
No, the agenda says five o'clock.
Does it?
Yep.
Oh, the one I saw said five thirty.
Yeah.
It says five, okay.
And, and it's at Old Town Hall, not prime time.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thanks, Ken. So. They'll be re, reviewing the application. At that time, right, Bill?
Oh, yeah, we. We've got, got a lot to speak.
Yeah, okay.
And.
But you'll just go through your process, so.
What's that?
You'll go through your process, the CPC will go through their process, what they need to do.
It's. Well, I mean, the. Application for funding. Outlines the amount of. Bottom line for the CPC is. They want. What's it for? In this case, it's three hundred and twenty-three K.
So that's the discussion for CPC.
CPC, yeah.
Exactly, so we're not gonna get into that. Is there anything else going on with the CPC?
Well, we have. We have, believe it or not, we have five. Applications. The two, two positions. And there. Ron is one, is one. For the, and I have the list of the others. And so that's another issue we have to deal with, I think we're gonna try to deal with it. On Thursday, I don't know, depends on how. I don't know, well, see how Kevin Field about it, I can't make any.
I think that's why it's, it's gonna be like an interview session.
So that's, that's the, that's.
Yeah, the rented, the rented view, so that's. I, I. Not too comfortable with that, because. Well.
So.
You gotta turn three people down, is what.
But I think it's great that there's community interest, so.
Yeah.
Very good, okay. We didn't have any correspondence. I don't see any public, so we don't have any public input. Under other, Rafa and I are gonna be meeting with the Bristol Aggie Superintendent. To discuss the Nate Crane Memorial Plan. On March third. And then. I had some really distressing news for about twenty-one twenty Water Street. I talked with Jim Aggar about it, and he had to board that building up today. I drove by it a couple of weeks ago, and it was a disaster. It's been broken into. He will. Be doing a demolition. Survey. Kind of.
Delay thing.
Delay thing in there, and he will send us a formal.
Can, can you fill me in, and the rest of the people in West Dayton? What, what that's all about?
Waters, twenty-one twenty Water Street, we talked about at one of our meetings, it is in the Quorum Shipyard District, it is the. Hathaway. Hathaway. Um, it is one of the oldest houses in Dayton. Um, it's across the street from the river, and I know for a fact.
That, is that that little cake?
No.
No, it's a big one.
Well, this one's for sale. Just got sold.
No. It's, it's, then for closed down, I think it was just pulled off the market, a bank owns it. Um. It's not. Sad shape.
Yeah.
Jim said, you know.
Thank you.
Through it, he'll work with us if we want a couple of months to kind of figure out if we can do anything. You know, because it is one of the oldest houses.
It is, very old.
You looking at it, you wouldn't guess that, could you say, well, there's a lot of these around?
It was on Zillow.
Yeah.
And they showed interior, and the interior is pretty bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not, barely livable, really.
Um, so he will.
No, just, no, no, not a magic trick, just swipe with your finger.
So he'll keep me apprised, and I'll let you guys know, so that's sad, huh, Rafa?
Very sad.
Yeah.
Well, but, can I just ask a question about that?
Yeah.
That'd be a candidate. For.
Yeah, all they did was, see, it says one of five.
Yeah.
So if you just.
Yeah, and, and just. Um.
But it's so.
It's kind of different than when we did James Breaks, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, that town doesn't own it, uh, there's different owners, so.
But that.
It's not gonna change what happens as far as the demolition delay, but like, you know how we tried to save the James Breaks House, and. We were able to salvage some pieces and all of that, you know, this is. Right, yeah.
Probably won't be allowed to go in at all, if it's that bad.
Just not focus on any particular who the owner of.
No, no, no.
It is, what makes it historical, there, George Washington sleep there.
It's part of the Quorum Shipyard District, um.
Yeah, it has a.
That is in West Dayton.
Thomas.
Used to build ships in that river.
Yeah.
And that's part of the ship.
Yeah, Thomas Quorum, um, built the shipyard.
Well, his house on the.
Yes, and his house is in the district, um, this house was owned by.
Hathaway.
Hathaway.
Right next door.
Right next door to Quorum, and I believe they were co-owners of the shipyard.
Yes.
Um, then it was later owned by Charles Whitmarsh. Who was a, a big name in town, he was a businessman. Was his grocery store.
There was a store.
There was a store.
Didn't they have rum?
Mm-hmm, rum, yes, so, you know, it has a lot, a lot of history.
Okay.
Um.
Because all doesn't mean history.
No, but I think because the shipbuilding along the river, that was.
Yeah, that was in that car.
Right.
Thing.
Right.
Add it to the district or something.
So, um, Jim is gonna keep, keep us surprised of what's going on with that building.
And so was it, was it pulled out of the market?
Was it what?
Was it pulled out of the market?
I don't think it's on the market anymore. I'm not sure about that, um.
They want big money for that.
Yeah, they want, yeah.
Well, that.
It is, um. So.
They reduced their, I watch, I've been following that house on Zillow, and. I think the first price was like way off.
It's still way off.
Yeah, and.
Was it almost?
Quite a bit, but apparently didn't get any, uh, I mean.
No, no, no offers, yeah.
You watching the VFW?
All right, so, um.
Oh.
So we'll just, excuse me, guys. We'll wait for Jim's words on that now, we still have.
Seven hundred.
Bill.
That place.
Bill, I'd like to wrap this up.
Gonna get that.
Bill.
Point order.
Um. We still have one commission position open, and our next meeting is March fourteenth at six P M. All right, does anyone have anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sarah Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Pat?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Irene?
Hi.
And I'm an I, Rafa?
Hi.
Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, we're all set. I gotta stop.
Good night, take care.
Yep.
I think it'll be fun to do.
Done recording.